Ending or repealing various provisions of the Hawaii Revised Statutes, or the Session Laws of Hawaii for the purposes of correcting errors and references, clarifying language, or deleting obsolete or unnecessary provisions. First up testifying, we have DCCA with comments. I see you right there. Candace? Okay, we'll move on. Candaceito, if you still want to testify, just let us know after LRB goes. So Legislative Reference Bureau in support.
Good afternoon Chair. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, great. We stand on our written testimony in support and I'll be available for questions.
Okay, thank you. Last call, Candaceito. All right, members, any questions? Seeing none, moving on to HB 756 H1, relating to the Board of Agriculture. First up, we have DHHL in support.
Aloha Vice Chair Matayoshi and members of the Judiciary and Hawaiian Affairs Committee, Lehuakini Laocano for the Department of Fine Homelands. Apologize that Chair Island is not here, but we stand in support of this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, the Hawaii Department of Agriculture with comments. Oh, we got a lot of, a lot of people missing today. Last call, Department of Agriculture. Members, any questions? All right, seeing none, moving on to HB 741 HD1 relating to Ethics. First up, we have DLNR, I'm sorry, first up, we have Hawaii State Ethics Commission with comments.
Good afternoon. What are you trying with Hawaii State Ethics Commission? We stand on our written testimony with comments and I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, members. That's all the testifiers we have today. Any questions? Seeing none, moving on to HB 1102 HD1 relating to litter control. First up, we have DLNR in support.
Aloha Vice Chair, members of the committee, we stand on our written testimony in support, available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Beach Environmental Awareness Campaign Hawaii in support.
Aloha, can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Great. Aloha, my name is Suzanne Frey, oh sorry, Aloha Chair Nakashima, Vice Chair Matayoshi, and committee members. My name is Suzanne Fraser. I'm speaking on behalf of Beach Environmental Awareness Campaign Hawaii, which is an all volunteer nonprofit, bringing awareness and solutions to plastic marine debris. And we're in very strong support of HB 1102, particularly the original version, which goes into effect upon approval. And we'd really appreciate if you could please pass this bill and amend it to upon approval. We have over fifteen hundred people in support of this measure. And you can see that in our testimony, we attached a petition with one thousand five hundred and four signatures on it. We also included photographs so that you can see that mass balloon releases are, are in occurrence in Hawaii. And this is flying litter. They're very dangerous to marine life, particularly seabirds and sea turtles that can ingest them and also other animals that get entangled. And in addition, we've also attached a statement that, that's from the Balloon Council website, showing that the industry also supports banning balloon releases. Mahalo for the opportunity to give testimony in strong support of this bill.
Thank you. And members, we have a number of individuals in support and with comments, but the only one here to testify today is Dean Otsuki in support.
Um, okay, can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay, great. Aloha Chair Nakashima and Vice Chair Matayoshi, Committee on Judiciary and Hawaiian Affairs. I'm in strong support of HB 1102, which prohibits intentional release of balloons inflated with a gas that is lighter than air. I do like the original version better because it takes a, it goes into effect immediately after it's passed. Being an island state, it's, I think it's a no brainer that we pass this bill because balloons are like flying trash. And as they end up, and they end up as pollution anywhere they land. Marine life mistake them for their food and ingest them, which can harm marine life. There's better alternatives than balloon releases to celebrate events such as giving flowers, Jolai, planting a tree or garden, having a nice meal. And plus, other states have passed this similar law as well too. So please pass HD 1102 to take effect immediately after it's passed. And thank you for giving me the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. That's all the testifiers we have. Members, any questions? All right, seeing none, moving on to HB 1086 HD1 relating to veterinarians. First up, we have DCCA in opposition. I'm sorry, I think that was a mistake. I'm pretty sure they're in support.
Good afternoon Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. My name is Chelsea Fukunaga on behalf of the Board of Veterinary Medicine. That was a mistake. We are in support of this bill. We stand on our written testimony. I'll be available for any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you. Next up, Hawaii Humane Society in support.
Hi Chair, Vice Chair, Committee members. Thank you for accepting our testimony in enthusiastic support of this measure. You have that testimony explaining the reasons why. I just wanted to spend the little time I have with you this afternoon explaining why we think this is necessary. I understand there's been some pushback from folks who don't believe that the passage of the bill is necessary. And I think they may be confusing the roles and responsibilities of private citizens, good Samaritans, in terms of responding to animals in distress with the roles and responsibilities of veterinarians. There is a provision in statute that allows you or I, the untrained first responder on the scene perhaps, to treat an animal in distress without fear of being prosecuted for practicing veterinary medicine without a license. But obviously, that response would be limited to our own skill set and likely involve things like first aid and transporting the animal to a veterinary clinic. Veterinarians, of course, once they get those animals, have much broader skills that they can bring to bear to make sure that animal gets the care it needs. But right now, they are limited in what they can do for the animal absent an owner relationship, so absent owner consent. And that can delay the care in significant ways for these animals. Just as the official lost and found, for example, Hawaiian Humane doesn't obtain ownership for an animal without identification for forty-eight hours. And that can take five days for an owner, for an animal with identification. So during that time, we're very limited in terms of the care that we can provide to an animal in distress. And our veterinary team would simply like to have all of the tools at its disposal to provide what those animals need right away. In terms of the mandatory reporting provision of this measure, it's modeled very closely on mandatory reporting of suspected child abuse for providers who deal with children, teachers, social workers, physicians. And there's a great connection actually between child abuse and animal abuse. Decades of research suggesting that if one is occurring, it should be a red flag for law enforcement that the other is possible or even likely. So we think this is a measure that is, will do great good the day that it takes effect. And we urge the committee to please pass it. Thank you.
Thank you. And to all the testifiers, just a reminder that we have a two-minute limit on testimony. Stephanie, there's another Hawaii Hawaiian Humane Society testifier, Casey Carter. Is that largely the same testimony though, or is there anything new to add?
Vice Chair, Dr. Carter is our chief veterinarian and has expertise that I don't on the issue. So I think it would be great to have his testimony as well.
Okay, Dr. Carter, if you're there.
Yes, how's it going guys? Thanks for listening to me for a second. I'll make it quick. I am in strong support of this as well. I think that this isn't just a Hawaiian Humane Society bill. This is a veterinarian bill all around. So I think by making mandatory reporting mandatory for all vets, that's going to do a couple of things. It's going to increase the incidence of reporting that's happening. And that's sort of where we get involved, but it's going to increase it in the whole community, not just at our level. Also, by making it mandatory for veterinarians, it's going to decrease the chances of fear of retribution from the people that they are reporting. So if a veterinarian reports somebody for animal abuse, they're legally obligated to do so. So there would be less chance that that person would come back and do retribution on them. Going along with all the other stuff that Steph said with our being able to perform emergency procedures that are not necessarily life threatening but are suffering alleviating, I think will improve, improve our animals welfare across the island. And that's about all I got. So thank you for listening and I urge you guys to, to pass this bill.
Thank you. Members, we have a number of testifiers individually in support, all in support. But the only one we have today indicating that they will be here is Guinea too. Guinea, are you there?
Yes, I am. Thank you so much Chair for, Vice Chair for the opportunity to testify in strong support of this bill. I actually adopted a little eight pound dog that had been severely abused by his previous owner. And I'm very grateful that the vet clinic reported it after they saw multiple, and you know, often injuries, serious injuries. But, you know, to protect them, I think is so critical because if they didn't report it, this poor, well, obviously, we, we did find out that other dogs had died in their, in his care. And, you know, it's, it's really a shame when we can't protect these voiceless and helpless animals by doing the right thing for them. I mean, the vets, all they want to do is treat them and alleviate their suffering and hopefully save their lives. And so I can't imagine not doing something, not passing a bill that would allow them to do that. And I think it would also be a message to send to the perpetrators that, you know, these things will be looked at and reported. It will hopefully make them a little more careful about doing any harm to our, to the animals. So I really would urge you please to do the right thing for, for the animals and to protect our, the veterinarians. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That's the last testifier. Members, any questions? Seeing none, we'll move on to HB 1029 relating to Living Park Planning Councils. We have one testifier, DLNR in support.
Good afternoon Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. I'm Kirk Cottrell, the administrator for the Division of State Parks. And, and we stand on our written testimony in support of this measure. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Members, any questions? Seeing none, moving on to HB 901 HD1 relating to environmental impact statements. We have first up, the Office of Planning in support.
Hi, good afternoon. Rodney Funicochi for the State Office of Planning. OP stands on its written testimony in strong support of this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Department of Transportation in support.
Thank you Vice Chair, members of the committee, David Rodriguez of the Department of Transportation. And we stand in our testimony in support. Fanya Mada is available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. And lastly, we have Life of the Land in opposition. Not present. Members, any questions? Representative Nakamura.
Thank you. I have a question for Officer Planning.
Yes.
Rodney, I wanted to find out, what is this? If, when you talk about secondary impacts, are these secondary actions not described in the original EIS?
There may or may not have been an EIS. In the case that triggered this really was a, you know, project that actually was downsized but approved, you know, in two thousand and three, didn't require an EIS then, but in trying to downsize the project and going back to the Land Use Commission, they encountered the, that they also need to connect the waterline to Kuaikani Highway. This is in Kona, project in Kona. And just because of that, they now are delayed more than a year by having to, to do an EIS for the project. So this is really meant to address minor infrastructure improvements, connections, you know, waterline, sewer line, connection of a driveway to the public road, kinds of circumstances that, you know, shouldn't of, in and of itself trigger an EIS. But that's what this measure will, will help to remedy.
Because there was a lot of opposition that this skirts the environmental impact review process. Quite a bit of opposition. So I was just wondering, how do you, how do you respond to those concerns?
Well, when you look at it is that making a connection to a public road is not a trigger, explicit trigger of the EIS process. But every project, just about every project, whether it's a single family home or a major subdivision, will need to connect somehow to a public road. And so it doesn't make sense that if it's just a minor connection issue, that that in and of itself should be an EIS trigger. And so that's basically the intent.
So, okay, thank you.
Brett McGalvey. Same person, sorry Rodney, if you're there. So let me give you another example. I don't know if it fits under this bill or if you say you have an existing road along the coast and the department decides Or if you say you have an existing road along the coast and the department decides they're going to go ahead and put a seawall in. Would they, under this bill, would they be required, they wouldn't have to require a secondary EIS because it wasn't included in the original one? Or would they still be required to do an EIS for a project like that?
I'm sorry, to put in what along the road?
Seawall, a seawall.
Seawall. Okay, well, no, but that's, that's different. We're talking about more a private project that connects to a public road. So this is already a public project that's already subject to, you know, EIS requirements by virtue of their, their expending state money or doing things on state land. So that would, that would not, I mean, they'll not be exempt certainly from this.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Thank you. Question.
Thanks, I guess, also for OP or maybe DOT. The, the instance, the example that you gave in for a project in Kona, but also for other projects. I mean, there is an exemption process that exists for these. So was there just hesitance to claim an exemption? Or, you know, was an exemption claimed for that process? Should it have been, or was there a reason?
There's really not an exemption process per se. Exemptions are more, you know, developed in advance for minor repairs, kinds of projects that, you know, are category, kind of categorical in nature that, you know, you can claim exemptions for. But connections don't, are not individually claimable as for exemptions.
Okay, so you're, but you can claim an exemption. You're saying there's not a blanket exemption, but can't you claim an exemption just based on the, the assessment of the, that there's little impact? Like, it's just touching, it's just a connection, state or county lands or funds, or DOT maybe also?
Yeah, no, there's no, yeah, there's no mechanism for that. You either are or are not triggered to do an EA or EIS.
Well, then it seems like, I'm not sure that that's accurate for every department, that there's no exemption on the existing exemption list for this kind of instance. But if that is the case, then it seems like it would be worth requesting that from the Environmental Council. And then there would be more of an opportunity to assess them case by case instead of us just putting in statute a blanket exemption for any interconnection, which I think is what's raising the concern from all the testimony that we received in opposition.
Hi, this is Misako with the Department of Transportation. I think for us, it's normally when a landowner, say they have a subdivision and they're connecting another roadway into the DOT right of way, they would need to get the use and occupancy. But normally, they would have their EA or an environmental study done for the subdivision, which should incorporate the secondary action, which is the right-of-way connection to DOT. So we feel that because it's, the primary actions should, environmental documents should cover the secondary action, it shouldn't be an issue. But however, if it's just, say, the action is just something to do within the right of way. I'm not sure if it's tied to the developer. Yes, we do have the exemption. I think if you look under HR 11-200.1-15, there are the actions that have exemptions. And if it qualifies under there, there's that. So you have to go first through the process to consider if there's an exemption to the, for preparation of the EA or EIS. If not, then you elevate it to a EA and then to an EIS. But in this case, we're looking at the secondary action, which is normally covered under the primary action.
Right. So I'm just saying, if there's a need for exemption in some cases, then I think there's an existing and more appropriate process to deal with that.
Yes.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. Members, any other questions? Seeing none, moving on to HB 902 relating to public lands. First up, we have HHFTC in support.
Good afternoon, Chair Nakashima, Vice Chair Matayoshi, members of the committee, Denise Matsubara from HHFTC. We are in strong support of this measure that will help streamline the development of affordable housing on state lands. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you. Next up, we have OHA in opposition.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Wayne Tanaka for the Office of Hawaiian Affairs. You, you should have our testimony in opposition, but offering an amendment that we believe would address some of our concerns. I did want to highlight two things. So first, you know, the ceded lands are a big deal, not just for OHA, but for the native Hawaiian community. You know, it's clearly documented that these lands were taken figuratively and literally at gunpoint. And they were only surrendered because the Queen knew that her people were willing and most likely would die if they tried to take back their government. And this is all, you know, this is documented historical fact, you know, and it has never been resolved. And if you look at what happened subsequent to that, it's pretty clear that the overthrow and the taking of these lands, you know, continue to manifest in the challenges that the native Hawaiian community is facing today, including with regards native Hawaiian healthlessness and housing insecurity. And so that's why the ceded lands are a big deal. You know, that's why we sued in ninety-four to stop the sale of ceded lands. And that's why we opposed leases, like ninety-nine-year leases that have been already caught out for decades now as illegal fiction and tend them out to a sale. The second thing, real quick, I'd like to highlight is that the public land trust is not the same as the ceded lands. So the public land trust is what requires the state to hold some of the, some of the ceded lands for the benefit of native Hawaiians and other purposes like education, homeownership. Only native Hawaiians get a pro rata share of the public land trust. The other purposes are served by the fact that the state is the largest landowner in the state because it holds title to the PLT and the rest of the ceded lands. So in other words, just to like, we oversimplify, the public land trust is like someone like stealing your car and then saying, here, we're going to rent this car out and we're going to give you ten percent of the money we get. It doesn't address the fact that the car was stolen in the first place or that the person that stole your car isn't really taking a great care of it. And so if someone says something like, you know, admission act talks about homeownership, they're really talking about the public land trust and Hawaiian concerns over what happens to the ceded lands. So that being said, we do have amendments that would address our concerns. It would only, all they do is, you know, if there are ceded lands that are being proposed for longer term than sixty-five-year leases, then, you know, it would give a native Hawaiian serving agency, OHA, a seat at the table. Happy to answer any questions the committee may have. Thank you. Your time.
All right, members, that's all testifiers. We have any questions? Brett Nakamura.
I have a question for Mr. Kanaka. I wanted to ask you, in your amendment, you talk about if HHFTC chooses to cut a lease longer than sixty-five years that they go before the OHA board. Can you give me a sense of what that process involves and how long it would take?
Um, you know, I'd imagine there'd probably be some consultation with OHA administration and staff to come up with a recommendation for what the board should maybe consider acceptable. So, I mean, I would imagine it doesn't require rulemaking. It doesn't require, you know, some of the more longer bureaucratic processes. It really just requires board approval. So if, you know, agreement is good, that, you know, is, is going to recognize and, you know, at least recognize, if not protect native Hawaiian claims of the ceded lands. It could just be a board meeting, which is, you know, sunshine law is six days. Yeah, I guess it would really depend on, you know, negotiations.
Your experience at OHA, when you want to get something before your board, how long does it usually take?
Um, I mean, it depends. Like, for our ledge, you know, our positions on our legislative measures that we track, you know, we take it to the board every week. So it's, it's pretty, it's pretty, it's right there at the six-day sunshine limit. Other things, you know, if we're going to plan for a kakako or something, then that would be, you know, a little bit longer.
Right. But assuming you have, and assuming you have a recommendation to the board, you're saying it could take a week to get. Part of the, the concern with the amendment is, how much time will it add to a very long current process to build affordable housing for Hawaii people? So by adding your amendment, you know, the concern is, how long will that process take? So I, so you're saying it could be quite, quite quick?
Yeah, I mean, I guess it would, and I can't speak for the board or, and it would depend on what, you know, folks are willing to put forward. But, you know, I just, you know, want to note that, you know, we, we care a lot about housing. You know, Hawaiians have disproportionate housing needs. We've invested forty million dollars over the last decade to support the housing security of our beneficiaries. So I can't imagine that, you know, we'd want to, like, throw a wrench in the works of a good, of a good affordable housing project. It's just, it's just a matter of making sure that, you know, we can at least maintain some, some recognition, some claims to the ceded lands before they're encumbered for, you know, a century or longer, which I think is what the vision is for this measure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Members, any, any further questions? All right, seeing none, moving on to HB 282, HD1 relating to minors. First up, we have the Governor's Coordinator on Homelessness with comments.
Good, good afternoon, Chair Scamore Shiget, Governor's Coordinator on Homelessness. I sent my written testimony supporting the intent of the measure. And just note that my office has been working to convene meetings with Child Welfare Services, the youth homeless providers and other stakeholders. And we're having good ongoing dialogue about working to a balance where we can balance increasing access to shelter while also meeting the safety of the minor population being targeted. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next up, we have DHS with comments.
Oops, sorry. Aloha, Vice Chair, members of the committee. I'm Daisy Hartsfield, Social Services Division Administrator, on behalf of the Department of Human Services. We're going to stand by a written testimony supporting the intent of the bill as well as providing comments. I just wanted to add that the department is committed in better serving this population of youth. And we're going to continue collaborating with service providers and continue the ongoing dialogue for, to try and meet the intent of this bill. And I'll be available for any questions. Mahalo.
Thank you. Next up, we have Rise in support. Right, not present. Those are all the testifiers. We have, members, any questions? All right, seeing none, moving on to HB 991, HD1 relating to the disclosure of vital statistics records. First up, we have Department of Health in support.
Good afternoon, Vice Chair, members of the committee. My name is Lauren Kim and I'm testifying as the acting state registrar for the Department of Health. The department strongly supports this measure, which, if enacted, will permit the department to resume sharing critical public health data with community partners for worthwhile pursuits such as cancer tumor surveillance and workplace deaths and injuries. It will also allow the department to reduce administrative burdens for law enforcement agencies seeking vital records, information for official government and investigatory, investigation purposes. Thank you very much, and I'm available for questions.
Okay, thank you. Next up, we have Department of Transportation in support.
Thank you, Vice Chair, David Rodriguez with the Department of Transportation. We stand in our testimony in support. Dean DeGano from the DOT.
And thank you. Next up, we have Puna Lula Police Department in support.
Good afternoon, Vice Chair, Captain Michael Kunishima at the Honolulu Police Department. We stand on our written testimony in support here for any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Those are all the testifiers. Members, any questions?
Department of Health, you know, OIP asks, in their testimony, the bill by itself does not show where public access to index information is provided for elsewhere such that no, it's no longer relevant to include section 238-18. So I'm wondering why the, the department is proposing doing away with the 238-18 reference.
Thank you for the opportunity to clarify. We took OIP's concern seriously and in the previous committee, we provided testimony explaining our rationale, which is as follows. That section eliminates public access to index data. Index data in the age of computerization is no longer necessary. We actually think it's a potential risk for identity theft or improper use and access to vital records. Before large databases, we had something akin to index cards, like in a library card catalog, where you could come in and conduct geological research or related vital statistics researches, research inquiries. Now with computerization, we see that as an overall liability. Most of our records have been computerized. And so we think it was prudent to eliminate what is no longer a necessary or useful means to access public health indices, indices for public health vital records. That said, if it is unclear going forward, I'm happy to work with this committee and with OIP to redraft a findings and purpose that describes the general goals of this department in addition to specifically why we are asking for the deletion of paragraph eighteen.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kim. Members, any other questions? If not, Department of Health. I'm not sure if this is the right, if you're the right person to ask, but I'm just wondering why thirty-three, 338-18.5 has been deleted or is proposed to be deleted in this bill.
Again, thank you for the opportunity to clarify. Last session or two, we proposed in the legislature, was very kind enough to entertain this amendment that allows the department to disclose to itself, very briefly, a little background. The department, Hawaii is a closed record state, meaning you have to have a very good reason in order to access birth certificate data, death certificate data. Obviously, there's very sensitive information contained therein. For example, your cause of death, was it due to suicide? Was it due to a disease or condition which may be stigmatized? Some states are not closed states. You can actually write the petition to get Michael Jackson's cause of death, for example. And Hawaii doesn't necessarily want to walk down that path, or at least that would be my recommendation. However, the statute was so rigorous that we couldn't disclose our, in consultation with our Deputy's Attorney General, it wasn't clear whether we could disclose data to ourselves. And so we requested 18.5 to share data within the Department of Health. We believe if, if this measure, if HB 1991 is enacted as largely drafted, the Institutional Review Committee will have the authority to decide what research or circumstances of disclosure are appropriate, whether they are internal within the Department of Health with external agencies such as the Department of Transportation, who does very valuable research into traffic fatalities, or with federal agencies like the U.S. Consumer Protection Agency. So we believe that empowering the Institutional Review Committee and the Director of Health to make all of those decisions, we no longer need 18.5 just to share with ourselves.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on to HB 608, HD1 relating to the Board of Education. Members, we have no one here to testify, so we'll just skip right along to HB 1200 relating to government. First up, we have the Hawaii Employee Union Health Benefits Trust Fund in opposition.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, committee members. The ETF Board opposes this bill in, in relation to the ETF Board. I just wanted to add that currently, six out of our ten trustees would be prohibited from participating and we would not have quorum for any board meetings. Thank you, and I'm available for questions.
Yep, thank you. Department of Transportation in opposition.
Thank you, Chair, David Rodriguez with the Department of Transportation. And we stand in our opposition, and we stand in our testimony in opposition. Kristi Cowser is available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Yep, thank you. DCCA with comments. Last call, DCCA. All right, DHS with comments.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, committee members. Joseph Campos, Deputy Director of Department of Human Services. The department stands on its written testimony providing comments and also suggested amendment in section five. Thank you.
Thank you. Members, we have a number of individuals and organizations in opposition in support and with comments. The only person here to testify, though, is Suzanne Zhang in opposition.
Thank you very much, Chair and Vice Chair and committee members. Yeah, I am Suzanne Zhang. I'm actually retired from the University of Hawaii, but I was appointed. Yeah, I am Suzanne Zhang. I'm actually retired from University of Hawaii, but I was appointed to be on the Language Access Advisory Council to the Office of Language Access, and I'm submitting this testimony on my personal capacity in opposition to HB twelve hundred. And as some, someone who is appointed as a board and commission, you know, I've never been in government at all, and I've been a teacher all my life, and I take this, I don't take this lightly, and my particular seat fulfills a requirement written into the statute to have somebody, quote, representing an accredited institution of higher learning who provides professional training and interpretation and translation, unquote. And of course, only the University of Hawaii's Center for Interpretation and Translation Studies offers a professional training in this, so it would have to be myself as an employee of the, of the state to be on the board. But the Office of Language Access was established, for example, this is just an example, to assist the various agencies across the state in understanding their obligation, their obligations under the statute, as well as the resources available for them to serve their limited English proficient populations. And so written into the Language Access Law are other Advisory Council members that are state employees from various sectors, as well as nonprofit representatives, various ethnic representatives and others. So whether or not they are state employees, to me, should not matter at all in their advisory role, because that's what we are. We not the ones who actually make the final decisions. We're just advisory. So we have a great team of advisories, for example, on our board from across the state, including outer islands, and that's how we know it's happening in terms of language access and every sector on the, on all the islands. So I'm very much opposed to this because this bill makes an across-the-board change to every single board and commission. And I feel like if, you know, if this bill is geared toward a particular board, then they should change that board and not touch a lot of the other boards and commissions. No one ever asked us if they wanted this, and it just, the, if, if this law is passed, it just would, to me, it would break apart a lot of the boards, such as the one I'm on. It would go against the very law that established the representatives to begin with, and it was, the law was written with that in mind, and it was well thought out, but yet this particular change affects all the boards and commissions, and I just think non-experts will end up serving on boards, guiding us down wrong paths based on false information. And so some boards require expertise, and to me, I'm just very much opposed to this bill. I think that it, there's a way to change it that should be changed. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. Last call for DCCA. All right, members, any comments, questions or comments, or questions really?
Yeah, David DOT. So you said that DOT has several commissions that your members serve on. Does that include the Metropolitan Planning Organizations, the MPOs?
No, the, the MPO does not, is not part of the boards and commissions of the DOT.
But okay.
I'm sorry?
MPO wouldn't be affected under this bill, then?
I, I could, can I defer to Kristi Kouser? She's, if you can unmute Kristi Kouser. But to my knowledge, I don't, you know, I don't know, but they don't.
Okay, because that's kind of important if it, if it did, but I mean, just, okay, thanks, Chair. Right, Chair.
Members, any other questions? Now we'll move on to HB one four four HD one relating to electioneering communications. First up, we have Campaign Spending Commission in Support.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. The Commission has submitted amended testimony in support of this bill. I would just like to make point out two items in that unlike an earlier bill heard by this committee, this bill will address Chair Nakashima's concern about having to disclose campaign strategy by changing the disclosure date from making of the contract for electioneering communications to the a, that the advertisement is actually disclosed or published. And the other item I want to point out is we are asking this committee to restore the repeal of language in lines eight and nine on page five of the bill that was in the original bill submitted by the Commission. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, and we have X Common Cause Hawaii in Support.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Sandy Ma for Common Cause Hawaii. We support HB one four four HD one with some suggested amendments. We are concerned about raising the electioneering disclosure amount from two thousand to five thousand. We suggest raising it to three thousand for more transparency and accountability, especially for smaller races such as Neighbor Island County races. We also suggest keeping the definition of disclosure date to the original definition that's currently in the bill, excuse me, currently in the law. We think that this would allow for more and timely disclosure in the last few weeks leading up to the elections or especially around Election Day. Thank you, and I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Members, any questions? Seeing none, we'll move on to our last item of the day, HB eight nine one HD one relating to electric guns. Just another quick reminder of the two-minute testimony limit. First up, we have the Attorney General's Office in Support.
Good afternoon, Chair Nakashima and members of the committee. Deputy Attorney General Amy Morikami for the Department of Attorney General. We support this bill. The constitutionality of a total electric gun bill was called into question by U.S. Supreme Court case, and there is currently a district court case seeking to invalidate Hawaii's electric gun ban. This bill will create a regulatory scheme require licensed sellers to conduct criminal background check on buyers and keep records of inventory and sales. This scheme is in response to the Honolulu Police Department's concerns about its ability to permit and register electric guns, and therefore the electric, their permitting and registration component of the prior bill was deleted. And this department does support this with, this bill with amendments non-substantive that are set forth in our testimony, and we ask this committee to pass the bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, HPD in Support.
Chair, Committee members, thank you for the opportunity to testify this afternoon. My name is David Nilson. I'm the Major of the Records and Identification Division of the Honolulu Police Department. The HPD supports House Bill eight nine one and the proposed HD two relating to electric guns. We support the bill as changed HD two to, which eliminates the permitting and registration requirements and obtaining an electric gun. We would like to, however, suggest that the effective date be delayed to January twenty twenty-two to allow the county police departments to prepare forms and procedures to license the sellers of the electric guns. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next up, we have the Hawaii Firearms Coalition in Opposition.
Hi, good morning, Committee members, Chair, Vice Chair. My name is Andrew Namiki Roberts of the Hawaii Firearms Coalition. We're in strong opposition of this bill as it's written. When we look at this bill, it is overly ridden, overly burdensome to stores that would like to sell these electric weapons. No other state has these requirements or similar requirements to this. There's no training program that's currently available for a person that wants to sell these arms to take, to be able to sell them within the county. The current wording of the bill also requires each county to make their own policies and procedures for this training, allowing five separate regulatory instructions for people that want to buy these. The current laws that we have in place with firearms would also cover electric weapons. Prohibited people could just be added into HRS one three four dash seven. If they add the word electric arms into that section of the bill, that would cover prohibited people. If we want to do a regulation scheme, instead of having engraving and additional burdensome regulations put on people that wish to sell them, it should be done similar to bicycles, where a person can buy one of these items at a store or buy them online. When they receive it, they then register it with the county or with the state, and they receive a sticker to put onto their item to say that it's registered. Possession of an arms without a sticker would result in a misdemeanor charge with regards to several other parts of the bill, with regards to safe storage. That's already been ruled unconstitutional by the Supreme Court in Heller. So that's actually not allowed already. The online shopping and the training requirements for this stops anyone buying it online. You wouldn't be able to buy one of these online. The additional costs of training and the background check, to get a background check, would cost thirty dollars per person, and that cost is going to be put the buyer or onto the seller. So it's an additional cost of training and additional cost for the background check. And on top of that, the Hawaii Criminal Justice Data Center isn't set up to handle that type of background check in a regulatory manner, where they would be able to get a background check, print a certificate, and get it to the store as they need it. In closing, we're in strong opposition to this. There's a lot of problems with this bill that are unforeseen. Taser should be treated the same as any other self-defense tool, such as pepper spray. You go into a store, you buy it. If you abuse it, then you get arrested, and then you face the crime for abusing the self-defense tool. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Members, we have a number of individuals, both in opposition and support. Mostly in opposition. The only ones that were here are Michael, well, the first one here to testify is Michael Rice in Opposition. Michael Rice.
I apologize for that. I actually have my microphone turned off. This, I am against this bill, of course. It's a little bit too burdensome, not only to the stores who would like to sell these products, but also to people who I think would be most in need of these products. You know, I believe the bit of a mage is twenty-one years old. What about college students? My eighteen-year-old cousin, you know, she got out of a very bad relationship on high school, and her boyfriend is still stalking her. She doesn't feel safe these days, but, you know, she can't get a gun, and actually, she doesn't want to get a gun. Like, this would deter that pretty much, because, you know, of course, she, basically, they just tell her, oh, call the police. But whenever he comes by, he's gone before the police get there. Another thing is that the, I apologize, that's something prepared. Apologies, I'm having a moment. Another thing would be, like, basically, older regulations on it, it would, it's basically harder to get taser under this law than it would be to get a handgun. And I would think that with the rise in crime here in Hawaii, it would be wanting to encourage people who wish to defend themselves to do so in a less than lethal manner. And, I mean, that doesn't make much sense. I mean, pretty much everybody I've been able to ask, and of course, with COVID, it's been hard to, in, to ask people about. But when I talk to people online, when I lay down what's required to get a handgun here and what's required, what would we require to get a taser here on this law, pretty much, I pretty much hands down, everybody says, I'd rather just have a handgun than.
Yeah, thank you, Mike. Can you summarize and conclude your testimony?
I'm sorry, that's about it then. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up, we have Marcus Tanaka in Opposition.
Hi, thanks for having me, you know. You know, the point of this bill is to make tasers legal, but not regulate it to the extent you guys are, which I appreciate it, going from a fifty-five-page bill to like, you know, what it is currently, but you're putting the burden and regulation instead of being on me, the buyer, now you're putting it on the seller. So you're just kind of flipping it and making them go through all these hoops. They got to take these classes and every three years and all these other, keep all these documents and do all these background checks. I should be able to order one on Amazon, have it shipped to my house in a week. Okay, or two days if I got Prime, but whatever, you know, but so a set of kitchen knives on Amazon, a kitchen knife is deadly. A taser or electric gun is less lethal. Okay, I can order a set of kitchen knives from Amazon without the seller having to get a permit from the city or the state in order to send it to Hawaii. But if someone wants to sell online to Hawaii, they have to go through all the hoops just to, again, sell things to Hawaii. And also, in this bill, there's nothing that says that if I buy it, my spouse or significant other can't use it either. So what happens if I'm out of action and my significant other or spouse or whoever has to use a taser and defend myself, help protect me or help protect her? So in order for me to transfer it to her, I would have to sign up as a licensed seller, which means I got to take that specific course that's required every three years and all the X, Y, Z, A, B, C stuff that's required just to transfer it to my wife. So either you got to, the whole point is, we want this bill that with, with as minimal regulations as possible. You're a felon, okay, you can't get it. That should be pretty much it. You know, other than that, you should be able to buy one on Amazon. You should be able to carry it with you wherever you want, things like that. So that's the idea that I want all you decision makers to understand is it's not like we want this. Okay, well, let's see what we can get away with to regulate everything. No, 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 we just want, be able to buy a taser, that, or electric gun. That's it. Um, and over there, thank you.
Thank you very much. Members, any questions? Yep, hearing none, we will recess for decision-making. Recess. Hearing none, we will recess for decision-making. Recess.
Okay, members, Committee on Judiciary and Hawaii Affairs reconvening for decision-making Wednesday, March third, twenty twenty-one. Two o'clock agenda. First up, House Bill three sixty, related to statutory revisions, amending review various provisions of the Hawaii Vice Statues for the Session Laws of Hawaii for the purpose of correcting errors and references, clarifying language, or deleting obsolete or unnecessary provisions. Members, after saying all of that, Senate Bill thirteen twenty-seven has already been received by the House, which is the same bill, so we will defer this. House Bill seven fifty-six, related to the Board of Agriculture. Chair's recommendation is that we go with the Board of Agriculture's recommendation to designate one of the at-large positions for the DHL Chair. And I recommend that we, with a three-year sunset on that, to give them a trial period on that and see how that works out for them. Members, any questions or comments? Seeing none, vice chair, as amended.
Chair's recommendation is to pass HB seven five six HD one with amendments. Chair and vice chair vote aye. Representative Ichiyama?
Aye.
Representative Kobayashi?
Aye.
Representative LaPresti? Excused. Representative Lowen?
Aye.
Representative McKelvey?
Aye.
Representative Nakamura?
Aye.
Representative Takumi?
Aye.
Representative Todd? Representative Tokioke? Excused. Representative Ward, excused. Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you very much. House Bill seven forty-one, related to ethics. In consultation with the previous committee chair, the chair's recommendation is that we change this bill and make it upon approval. And that's all. Members, any questions or comments? Seeing none, vice chair, as amended.
Chair's recommendation is to pass HB seven four one HD one with amendments, noting the previously excused members. Any members voting with reservations? Any members voting no? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you very much, members. House Bill eleven oh two, House Draft one, prohibiting the intentional release of balloons. If they leave a gas, then it's lighter than air. Members, chair's recommendation is to move this forward as is. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, vice chair, as is.
Chair's recommendation is to pass HB eleven oh two HD one as is, noting the previously excused members. Any members voting with reservations?
Reservations.
Reservations for Representative Kobayashi. Any members voting, any other members voting with reservations? Any members voting no? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you very much. House Bill ten eighty-six, House Draft one, related to veterinarians. Note that the bill does contain defective effective date. Chair's recommendation is to move it out as is. Members, any questions or comments? Seeing none, vice chair, as is.
Chair's recommendation is to pass HB ten eighty-six as is, noting the previously excused members. Any members voting with reservations? Any members voting no? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you very much. House Bill ten twenty-nine, related to living park planning councils. Chair's recommendation is to move this out as is. Members, any questions or comments? Seeing none, vice chair.
Chair's recommendation, recommendation is to pass HB ten twenty-nine as is, noting the previously excused members. Any members voting with reservations? Any members voting no? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you very much. House Bill nine oh one, House Draft one, related to environmental impact statements. Chair's recommendation, we defer this matter. House Bill nine oh two, House Draft one, related to public lands. Chair's recommendation is that we pass this out as is, and I'm going to make notes in the committee report regarding OHA's proposed amendments. Members, any questions or comments? Seeing none, vice chair, as is.
Chair's recommendation is to pass HB nine oh two HD one as is, noting the previously excused members. Any members voting with reservations? Any members voting no?
No.
Representative Kobayashi with a no. Any other members voting no? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Yeah, thank you very much. HB two eight two, related to minors. Vice chair, they checked with the sponsor of the bill and did assure us that this bill would probably be needed. So the chair's recommendation is move this out as is. Members, any questions or comments? Seeing none, vice chair, as is.
Chair's recommendation is to pass HB two eight two HD one as is, noting the previously excused members. Any members voting with reservations? Any members voting no? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. HB nine nine one, House Draft one, related to the disclosure of vital statistic records. Technical amendments, if you're clarity, consistency, and style, I will note the bill contains a defective effective date. And I would like to include in the committee report the response from the Department of Health regarding why section three three eight dash eighteen point five is no longer relevant. Members, any questions or comments? Seeing none, vice chair, as amended.
Chair's recommendation is to pass HB nine nine one HD one with amendments, noting the previously excused members. Any members voting with reservations? Any members voting no? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you very much. House Bill six oh eight, House Draft one, related to the Board of Education. Technical amendments, if you're clarity, consistency, and style, I will note the bill does contain a defective effective date. And for the committee report, I would like to include notation that large geographical islands like Hawaii Island may need two meetings, one on the east side and one on the west side. Members, any questions or comments? Seeing none, vice chair, as amended.
Chair's recommendation is to pass HB six oh eight HD one with amendments, noting the previously excused members. Any members voting with reservations? Representative Nakamura with reservations. Any members, any other members voting with reservations? Any members voting no? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Yeah, thank you very much. House Bill twelve hundred, related to government. Chair notes the incredible amount of opposition to this bill and will defer this matter indefinitely. House Bill one four four, House Draft one, related to electioneering communications. Chair will note that there is a defective effective date. And would like to, again, as in our previous bill, remove candidate committees from this particular section. Members, any questions or comments? Seeing none, vice chair, as amended.
Chair's recommendation is to pass HB one four four HD one with amendments, noting the previously excused members. Any members voting with reservations? Any members voting no? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you very much. House Bill eight nine one, House Draft one, related to electric guns. Members, this proposed House Draft two is kind of a first flurry into the electric gun bill because we had comments from the department, from the Honolulu Police Department that under the current process, they are already three months behind on the processing of these permits for actual guns. And so, working with Attorney General, we did come up with this for, with this scheme, which I think still needs some perfection, but is a work in progress. So I do want to defect the date and include technical amendments needed for clarity, consistency, and style. So defect date July first, thirty twenty-one. Members, any questions or comments? Representative McKelvey.
Thank you, Chair. I appreciate some work in progress, but I'm just, and maybe I should have asked to the AG, and maybe the Senate can look at it. You know, the AG's office uses very soft language insofar as the constitutionality goes, raises questions, and may. And I wonder if it's really, this court decision is really going to do what they say it's going to do, so. But, you know, I know it's a work in progress, and I know even though it might be shocking to most, I'm just gonna, for right now, go straight up. It's not Friday yet, right?
Members, any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing the vice chair as amended.
Chair's recommendation is to pass HB eight nine one HD one with amendments, noting the previously excused members. Any members voting with reservations?
Reservations.
Reservations for Rep. Kobayashi. Any other members voting with reservations? Any members voting no? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, members, from the previous agenda, House Bill twelve sixty-three, related to ignition in the lock devices. You know, there was a, there was a concern from the prosecutor's office regarding the testimony. But we have cleared that up, and chair's recommendation to pass this out as is. Members, any questions or comments? Seeing none, vice chair, as is.
Chair's recommendation is to pass HB twelve sixty-three HD one as is, noting the previously excused members. Any members voting with reservations? Any members voting no?
No.
No, by Representative Kobayashi. Any other members voting no? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Yeah, thank you very much. And finally, members, from yesterday, House Bill five seven six, related to health care. Chair asks your indulgence, and we will defer this one additional day to tomorrow, March fourth. With that, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.